So we'll go ahead and open with the invocation. Dr. Rigsby will give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
Good evening, everyone. Councilman Jindal.
Present.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Protemp Daly is absent. Mayor Duper.
Present.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, this is the period where we were entertaining speakers from the public. These are on non-agendized items. If you have a desire to speak on something that has been agendized, please fill out a card and turn it in up here to the clerk's desk. But if you want to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to come forward now. And I'll also look out to the IT world, just to make sure. Nobody from, okay, nobody on Zoom either. Moving on, we will deal with conflicts of interest as they arise. And moving on to our scheduled and related items, I am going to take prerogative and move item number 12 to the front, so we can address it. Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is have to do with the community benefiting improvement, okay? The history is, this is kind of repeat for what I presented at the last city council meeting, but I would like to go over it again. Back in 2012, the RDA resolved, dissolved. In 2018, the city council approved the Grove at the Loma Linda specific plan and mitigation measure related to the environment impact report. And the Grove is this piece of property right here, the project, which is the one in Red Boundary here, which is from Mission Road all the way to Redlands Boulevard, from Bren Mar and just to the slide to the west of California Street. And on September 2020, the city council approved the purchase and sale agreement for the 70.83 acres between the city and High Point Grove Limited. And on December 2020, the city council approved the exclusive negotiation agreement between the city and the High Point. As part of the community benefiting improvement, High Point is supposed to build a approximately 10,000 square feet equipped community center, which is this right here, about 2,500 square feet, two bay fire station, which is the area in pink here, public parks with Dark Creek feature, have an estimate of about $6 million, which is the one in green, and the Oakwoodland Preserve Park, which is this area in blue, okay? The total community benefit improvement should be about 18, I mean 13.8 million dollars. In addition to that, High Point also responsible reimbursed the city in the tune of $400,000 for the specific plan that we did for the projects. So that was all agree upon, okay? So what happening is, as part of the condition, we have the Frank Adobe site, which is at the south portion of the project, just north of Mission Road. As part of the condition approval, as part of condition approval, the High Point have to, they said that the Frank Adobe shall be preserved in place and the structure shall not be demolished, so it had to be there.
Let me just clarify a couple of things real quick, if you wouldn't mind. So in your first slide, if you could back up, right there. So it talked about the sale and the agreement between the city and High Point, and really what it should read is the city offering as the negotiator for the successor agency, correct?
Correct.
So should you spend a minute to explain what the successor agency is?
Okay, I'll do my best. The way it work is, this area right here, the land used to belong to redevelopment agency. And back in 2012, the state, Governor Brown, took away the RDA. And at time, when they took away the RDA, we had to create a successor agency, which is the agency that's going to take over all the funding, the land that's usually owned by the RDA, okay? So as part of that, the successor agency is made up of six different agency. So city is one of the six. So it's a city, the school district, Redlands School District, Community College District, San Juan Valley Municipal Ward District, the County of San Bernardino, and the City of Loma Linda, so total six agencies.
So in 2012, that property became, or came under the responsibility of the successor agency?
Correct.
Until all properties and debts were disposed of?
Correct.
Okay. And the city operated as the chief negotiator, but in order to sell that property, we had to get approval from those other five entities, correct?
Yes.
And collectively, all six agreed to sell to the developer?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not super clear, because it talks about a sales agreement between us and the city, and I want people to understand that it was between all of those other entities?
Yes.
Okay. And then you moved forward, it might have been out of order, but that other slide, as a condition of sale to this developer, the Frank Adobe has to be preserved, correct?
And also part of the EIR, yes.
So was there any opportunity or chance that this city council or anybody else was going to try to tear it down?
No.
Okay, so opposite of what Mr. Frank and other people have put out on social media, and to get support that we were going to tear it down could not happen, correct?
No.
Okay. So if we left everything alone, as it is right now with the deal that was made between the successor agency and the developer, the Frank Adobe has to be preserved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the reason we brought this item here tonight is, right now, as part of original agreement, we have four items, okay, as part of community benefiting improvement, that all the improvement have to total 13.8 million dollars. What the staff bring with you tonight is that we would like to add the Frank Adobe site to the list, so that we can ask High Point to fix the roof and the structure for a total approximately $87,920 for the re-roofing and the structure to support the roof. And the cost for the land, additional lot adjacent to this parcel, so that they can build a parking lot and some landscaping, some planting adjacent to the lot adjacent to this existing house, that value is estimated at $261,000. And also additional $20,000 for opera study and the tree replacement. So what we'd like to do is, is that, and this total $370,000, so that we would like to add this to the list, so that the High Point will get the credit for all of these three items right here. And the city also recommend that, the staff recommend on the city, is that we put this item as number four on the priority list, and then have item number five, which is Oakwoodland Project, be number five, just in case that the total amount that you can spend is 13.8, okay? The first priority is had to be the community center, the fire station, that's the two priority. And then to the park, and then hopefully will be the Adobe and the land adjacent to it, and then the last item will be the Oakwoodland Parks. And if the money run out, if it turned out that by spending all of these four items exceed 13.8 million dollars, the city can use park development impact fee that the High Point, they have to pay us for the project for the improvement for the park, okay?
Just some other points of clarification. So this was never a deal that the city quote unquote made with the developer, this is something staff is now asking us to approve?
Yes.
This was not something approved before by the city, or any negotiation that this city or this city council entered into, correct?
Correct.
But the staff is now asking us to give High Point $370,000 credit out of that 13.8 million, to conduct the work on this historical site?
Yes.
That potentially they would have been required to do or do something with anyway?
Yes. So, and then what the staff recommendation is, is to, as part of this 13.8 million dollar community benefiting improvement, that High Point have to spend, the staff recommend that the request that the city manager will be the one who managed the scope, to make sure that they actually spend all the 13.8 million dollars in this priority, okay?
Just some other points of clarification. So this was never a deal that the city quote unquote made with the developer, this is something staff is now asking us to approve?
Yes.
This was not something approved before by the city, or any negotiation that this city or this city council entered into, correct?
Correct.
But the staff is now asking us to give High Point $370,000 credit out of that 13.8 million?
Yes.
To conduct the work on this historical site?
Yes.
That potentially they would have been required to do or do something with anyway?
Yes. So, and then what the staff recommendation is, is to, as part of this 13.8 million dollar community benefiting improvement, that High Point have to spend, the staff recommend that the request that the city manager will be the one who managed the scope, to make sure that they actually spend all the 13.8 million dollars in this priority, okay? And also see the reimbursement of $400,000 from them, to make sure that they pay us back for the specific plan, subtract off some legal fee that they have spent for the project. And then the last item is add this Frank House to the community benefit improvement. And on a side note, the High Point have been working with the Two Canyon Conservancy Group, whose, the High Point would like to donate or give this property and the house to the Two Canyon Conservancy Group, so that they can operate, fix the house, and do all the thing that they want to do.
So just to summarize, the city would pay for the improvements, the developer would then release the house to Two Canyon, and Two Canyon would then maintain it?
Correct.
Is there any indication why Two Canyon would not do the improvements themselves?
Well, the only part that they would do is, the High Point would do is just fix the roof and just part of the structure, not the whole thing.
Based on us paying for it?
Correct. Well, based on we can reimburse all of the 13.8 million dollars.
Okay.
I have a comment. From the discussion that you've outlined, it's not the city paying to do it, it's the, it's just part of the deal that was worked out between the successor agency and the developer, so the developer will do it.
With $370,000 minus off the 13.8.
Yeah, but that money, that property was owned by the redevelopment agency and not by the city. So it's not, it's not really the city paying it in the first place or in the final analysis. It's the redevelopment agency, successor agency, that is paying for it out of that 13.8 million dollar credit.
That's a good legal question, then. Does it require all six agencies of the successor agency to approve this?
No, because that deal was struck between the city and the developer, while we were standing as the negotiating party for the redevelopment agency. So the redevelopment agency has already approved the deal, and whether or not this amendment to it requires any kind of involvement with the successor agency, I'm not sure.
I have been working with the Mark Hibs on this the whole time, so he know that, no, all I have to do is just come back to this body. And so.
A question about that, it's.
Mark Hibs is our attorney, which is special counsel for, that work with our city attorney. That had been working with this project all along for the past, I've been here 20 years, he's been here with us 20 years, so.
So one question before we move on. I know the city's not paying for it, but the, around 400K, it would come out of the 13.8 million, and we would take it most likely out of the Oakwoodland?
No, no, the $400,000 is a separate, separate.
No, he's right. He's absolutely right. He's saying it retracts out of the CBI total.
No, no, $400,000 is.
No, you're thinking the development, no, you're thinking the.
Specific plan.
Yeah, the specific plan reimbursement. He's talking about the 370K.
Oh, yes, yes, 370, yes, yes.
So that's coming out of the 13.8 million?
Correct.
And that would most likely come out of the Oakwoodland Preserve, because we're prioritizing this one over the Oakwoodland?
Correct.
So we would cut that budget by half?
No, 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 the whole idea is, I'm hoping that we will get it done, and if, if we cut it in half, that we have the money that High Point have to pay the city for park development impact fee, that we can use that money to do that park projects.
So what was that money going to be used for before this came along?
It can be used for any park projects.
What was it going to be used for beforehand? Like what were we planning on using it?
By law, we have to use it for park space.
Yes.
So it could have been used for other park space, right?
Yes, it can be used for the Horder Crooks Park, Linda Bailey Park, Alma Digna Parks.
I think the Frank Adobe is a park, so it's being used for the appropriate purpose.
But it's not ours.
Yeah, but it's, but we're allowed to spend the money on a park, so if you're going to say, you know, that it's all fungible money, and it's a displacement of one fund for another, then I think it's a legitimate expenditure of park funds.
But it's not a public park owned by the city.
But the, our actual money is going to be spent on a public park owned by the.
Owned by who? It's not a public park.
Well, any park, any park that is donated.
To a private conservancy.
We're going to be spending on the Oak Grove.
Correct.
And it's displacement money that's going to the, but, but, you know, Councilman Jindal's comment is that, you know, why are you spending our money essentially by pushing a bunch of money around, you're basically spending our money on the Frank Adobe? And my response to that is, it's a historical interest to the city, and the city has an interest, and it's like a park, I don't care if we spend park money on the Oak Groves, where we spent this other money on the Frank Adobe and swapped them out. I don't see it as a problem.
Councilman Jindal's asking a financial question, you're suggesting a philosophical response. The bottom line is, the money is coming out of.
Everything devolves into philosophy.
There you go. Politicians, you know.
So last question about that, and I never said that, you know, why are we using the 400K, so that's a misrepresentation. For that four and three, in terms of priority, why do we decide to put that as priority four instead of five?
We have many public workshop on this project, and as part of negotiation with the developers at that time, we came up with, for sure, we want the fire station, for sure, we wanted the community center, and then, and then we want the park adjacent to this two facility, and if you look at it, the Oakwood Park is 733,000, which is lesser amount. And a lot of this improvement here will be improved by this adjacent project, anyway, so. And then this project had to pay for park development impact fee also.
Yes, sir.
I think a larger problem for that 13.8 million dollars is that there's a 10-year window to do these developments, and with inflation running at 10-plus percent, the money will shrink by more than 50% by the end of 10 years. That will threaten these projects a lot more than the Frank Adobe will.
Yes, that's why, at the last city council meeting, I did mention that the, at this point, the High Point, the developers were willing to work with the city and work with the Two Canyon Conservancy Group, so that they can move forward with the projects, and then we, hopefully, we will bring this to the city council on July the 12th. We plan to take it to Planning Commission on the July the 6th, Planning Commission, and bring it to this body on July 12th. And that will consist of 103-unit condominium projects and 51 lots, single-family lots. And that will be a bigger lot between 10 and 15,000 square feet lots.
Dr. Daly? I have multiple questions, but I want to hear from the community before I ask most of them. But there is one clarification that would be helpful to me. Councilman Rigsby said 10 years from now. So 10 years from now, who's going to be paying for the maintenance of that? Where's that money coming from?
As soon as we take all this, as soon as they start construction, all of it, the city will be maintaining the facility, maintaining the parks.
Ad nauseam.
Well, is part of, is part of the city responsibility when they build parks, the city.
I understand, I understand.
Maintain it, when we build the fire station, the city maintain it. Yes, yes.
Those are questions I'm going to hear from in my neighborhood, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, and again, the city will receive some revenue, I'm saying, some property taxes from all these residents, but only one-sixth of the whole property tax, because there's five other agencies that will get that property tax.
I think it's important to talk about the meetings we had, the community meetings we had in development of this entire project. So this was not necessarily led by the council, this was led by the community, correct?
Yes.
And how many, you remember how many meetings we had?
Four to six.
And these were things that the community established as priorities, because we had a voting system, and these are Loma Linda residents, correct?
Yes.
So Loma Linda residents are basically the ones that told us this is how they want this area developed?
Yes, because we have that workshop in the committee room.
Multiple times.
And we went through multiple time, went to different scenario, we actually put the little button.
With our voting, yes. Okay, so the Loma Linda community basically told us how they wanted this developed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and including the priority, so, at that time, so.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay. I know we have some people that want to speak on this. Is there any preference on who wants to go first? Mr. Ship, you want to lead it?
Mr. Dangerman.
Okay.
Yeah, let me get. I met with Mr. Ship in advance, and we tried to figure out who should maybe go first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. One of the neat things about getting older is you need glasses, and you can't remember what you were going to say next, so I've written it all out, but I'm Pete Dangerman, president of the Two Canyons Conservancy, and we're a federally registered nonprofit, and our board is made up of a diverse group of experienced individuals, who are all volunteers and are working to complete a project that's been in the making for over 20 years. And this map that's showing up is a green area that has been slowly pieced together, is almost equals 10,000 acres that have been preserved in the greater San Timoteo Canyon area. And the overall reasons for it, first of all, are habitat, but then within that area are some, a number of historic sites and prehistoric sites. There's also recreation opportunities and also direct sale agricultural opportunities. And the purpose of our conservancy is to finish the job and get it done and fully acquire the last couple parcels, but also to develop those areas. And I might say that there's a couple spots already that are in operation, recreation nodes in this area, that are owned by public agencies, and then leased to the Redlands Conservancy, including a parcel of land that was, came through funding from Loma Linda, actually, where Loma Linda bought a large parcel of land for, as mitigation for the flood control channel through Loma Linda. So there's a precedent in this area for actually the land to be owned by a public agency and then leased to a nonprofit. The primary historic resource focal point in that area is an area called El Casco Lakes, and these include the first home site built by Horace Frank back in the 1850s. It was where he headquartered both his ranch, but also freight hauling business that ran all the way from San Pedro Harbor all the way into the Arizona minefields. And also at that location, later, after he built the Adobe and partially built the Adobe and then passed away in Loma Linda area, the stage stop for the stage that ran up through the canyon was built, and where Wyatt Earp, when he was a teenager, lived and drove the stage up and down the canyon. Also, they donated the land for the old schoolhouse, and which still stands today and has been refurbished. So I had become aware of the Frank family history when I did the Mission Road historic study for the city of Loma Linda some years ago. And as a part of that, became aware of the Frank family and the Adobe and its descendants, and so I got back in touch with Joe, I found, and thankfully, for some help by a city staff person, and we discovered that it has the opportunity to talk about stories that can't be done in this area, that deal with earlier, the first settlements in all of the inland empire right next door, the Zanha, as well as the first citrus that was planted in the inland empire as well. So at present, the Adobe and the surroundings are a valuable historic resource, but after years of non-residence, are not very attractive. We see, however, that properly improved and landscaped, it could become a community asset and a focal point for that surrounding historic district community. Our initial ideas are on how to make it attractive, to solve the various site issues, and to provide a full range of historic interpretation. And if we're granted the opportunity to undertake the project, we look forward to involving the community, the surrounding community, in the final site planning decisions. But I'd like to speak to three key issues that the council raised last week. First of all, funding. Our board has a great deal of experience and success with finding funding, and success is almost always dependent upon demonstrating partnerships. We would likely, like to strongly suggest a partnership whereby the city assists in securing the site, and that we then can raise funds in order to construct it and develop it and provide proper interpretation and take over the operation. And by the way, if you wish to keep it as a city park and in city ownership, that really fits a model that is most often used, and we would have no objection to that, and then take it on some sort of a long-term lease, as is done in many other places. So showing that the city has interest in, is demonstrating the support would be a tremendous benefit, allowing both of us to achieve our objectives for the community. Secondly, issue was economic development, and we're, like you to know that we're working on an economic development concept at the urging of the Mission Inn's Chief Executive Officer. It builds on the idea of getting existing people that are visiting or passing through the region to spend an extra night. No matter if the reason for being here is attending a convention in Riverside, or education and medical issues in Loma Linda, or visiting at Esri for meetings in Redlands, people might want to learn about and experience this area's unique history of early California. The concept has proven to be very successful in other locations, and we think will work very well here as well. And don't forget school groups. It's been the experience of the various park agencies that I've led and worked with that school trips usually. that school trips usually lead to family trips, with kids bringing their families back to see and experience what they thought was something very special. So I think that, and school groups, well, I'll get to that in the next point, and that is the extra lot issue. We were very opposed to the High Point development, the way it was, because there was not adequate amount of space preserved to properly meet the CEQA requirements. But we proposed a expansion of that. And so the idea is that this extra lot and the parking, and that became an issue at the last meeting. What we're proposing is a very small parking area consisting of about a half a dozen sites for cars and a bus parking area. This is an important feature for the neighborhood. There's no parking along this stretch of Mission Road, and in the past, school buses have actually stopped, blocking the street in order to let kids get out quick and then go park somewhere else. This is dangerous and it's not a solution. It has also been suggested that the buses might unload in the park to the east and have the kids walk down through the neighborhood. Having groups of noisy kids walking through a neighborhood is not neighborly, also not a good idea. So expanded property that we use and would like to include, not only would meet the parking needs for those school buses, but occasional other people that come in cars, but would provide a quality setting for the Adobe. Give room for restrooms and an equipment shed to display historic orange grove and early buggies, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, it would provide room for a vegetable garden displaying food productions that were essential to the 1880s type of household 100 and plus years ago. Having the extra space is one of the keys to making this a successful project. Thank you for listening. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have now or later.
Mr. Dangeman, I do have a couple questions for you. Can you give me the history of Two Canyons, when you were formed?
Say again?
When was Two Canyons formed, sir?
Early last year.
Okay.
But they, in the past, I have worked with Redlands Conservancy and Riverside Land Conservancy for the last 20-plus years of putting, piecing together the various lands that we have worked on.
You mentioned that Two Canyons has got a history of putting together partnerships and packages with money and support.
Well, that's been my, my whole life has been working to find funding.
So that's your history?
Say again?
Your history, sir.
My history, but also various other board members. We have two former museum directors and executive director of Redlands Conservancy, as well as other former county employees, so.
And what's the financial status of Two Canyons right now? Is it able to contribute something in a partnership?
We have two major donors that have helped and have also pledged additional funding. A key part of the lands that haven't been acquired is a major orange grove and also a large section, couple miles worth of stream. And one donor from Pasadena has pledged the funding to do all of that, so, and loaned us money to do some other portions. We're presently seeking a $30 million grant to deal with a must-have wildlife corridor connection between, through Calamasa to back towards the San Bernardino Mountains. Basically, the key is that mountain lions south of that point are becoming inbred. And so there's a real need push-on in order to create wildlife corridor connections. And this is like the last remaining possibility to do that. So again, we're dealing with larger amounts of money and finding grant monies have been part of what we do.
Is Two Canyons in a position to match some funds with the city for this project?
Well, I think that a match is what I'm suggesting, that if you take care of getting the land, that we will then go after the development money and as well as then the operating money.
So if the development money didn't come, what would we end up with there as far as the city?
A very mad Pete Dangeman.
I got that. But you have a beautiful drawing up there. But if we use the $370,000 of credit, all we're doing is buying a piece of land, fixing the roof and shoring up the wall, no, I'm sorry, doing orange trees, the arborist. But who is going to pour concrete, create the water fountain, do all that other stuff there to develop this into something beautiful? Because we're going to have, and I know I'm going to get shunned by everybody in the room, but we're going to have multimillion-dollar homes that are going to surround all of this. So what keeps this from being something that's neglected? What's your viability to make it happen, I guess is my question?
I don't know.
That's not a very stable answer, sir.
I avoided saying, "Trust me."
I know, I know.
But I.
But that's kind of where we're at, right?
You know where my brothers and my dad would say, "If you think it's the right thing to do, go for it. Doors will open for you." That's been my whole life history. I've, in my lifetime, helped to preserve just under 160,000 acres of land and habitat throughout California and developed many, many parks. And I think that this is a very doable type of project that we can find funding for. So at any rate, my motto has always been, "Just go forward."
Okay. Well, we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your history and the work that you've done in the area.
But it's, I might just say, Ed, that the general plan and your calls for preserving the Adobe. What we're offering is a partnership whereby if you provide the land, we will find the money to fix it up and operate it. It seems to me that's a fair agreement or offer.
Okay. Is there any particular order, Mr. Ship? Did you want to go next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Jim Ship, retired teacher from Bryn Mawr Elementary School, past chairman of the Loma Linda Historical Commission, editor of the book Loma Linda, published by Arcadia Publishing, and current president of the Loma Linda Area Parks and Historical Society. I'm also a childhood resident of Loma Linda, an alumnus of Loma Linda Academy and Loma Linda University, and a continuous resident since 1985. I did not mean to teach third grade. It was forced upon me. My principal assigned me that job. But it turned out not to be the punishment that I thought it would be. It turned out to be one of the joys of my life, especially the part that was the most difficult. The state of California requires that third graders be taught about the history of their community. And when I was assigned to third grade, I found out that there were no books for children about the local community. There were no textbooks. There were no materials. There was nothing supplied. We were on our own. I knew very little at that point about the history of Loma Linda and its surrounding areas when I started teaching third grade in 1995, but I dove in headfirst. I started to do my homework, and one of the first names that jumped out at me was Horace Monroe Frink. It seemed almost mythical that one man could be so involved in the history and development of California. As a teenager of either 15 or 16, depending on which source you look at, he left home to travel west with Brigham Young and a wagon train of Latter Day Saints headed to the promised land of Utah. Brigham Young was his friend and neighbor in New York. He was not a member of their church, but he drove Brigham Young's wagon and was an integral part of that westward movement. Once he got to Salt Lake City, he determined to keep going, and he got to California in time for the discovery of gold at Sutter's Mill and was there when that happened. He went on to be a scout for General John Fremont and helped to scout routes through the Sierra Nevada and throughout California in the West. The more I learned about him, the more surprising it was. He became an integral part of not just the gold rush, but also the silver rushes in his freighting capacity. He had established freight routes to move gold and silver and supplies to the mines. And then he settled, as Mr. Dangeman has mentioned, in San Timoteo Canyon and ranched at El Casco. And then he turned his sights to San Bernardino. And by that, I mean Old Town San Bernardino, by which I mean the Mission District, which we have inherited and is now part of Loma Linda. But at that time, it was San Bernardino. And he purchased land along the Sanha, which was a critical part of the agriculture of this part of the valley, and set out what are believed to be the first orange trees in the Inland Empire, watered by the Sanha. But that wasn't enough of a contribution, because he and his brother got involved in surveying for the Southern Pacific Railroad. And without those things coming together in one piece, there would have been no citrus empire in the Inland Empire. The water of the Sanha, Horace's orange trees, many of which are still standing and growing and thriving despite quite a bit of neglect over the last few years. And then the surveying to bring the railroad through what is now Loma Linda so that the citrus crops from California could head east to markets where they were eagerly awaited in the middle of winter when there was no fresh fruit available. And he had a personal involvement in every single part of that, he and his family. Pioneers indeed. He was a man of action. And the last thing that he really did in his adult life, before he passed away at a fairly young age, was to build an Adobe hacienda farmhouse from the soil of that location. He embodies the very history of California and the Inland Empire. And the site itself is important, not just the building that is there. We've had discussions before, "Well, could we move it to Heritage Park?" Moving an Adobe building is not practical, but what was designated for the State Register of Historic Places was the Frink Ranch, its site, its location, because of what happened at that place. Just as much as we wouldn't move some cannons from Gettysburg to another place and say, "Well, here's where we're going to celebrate Gettysburg." It has to be the place where it actually happened. So I was astonished as a teacher to find in 1999 that the Adobe still stood, the last of the pioneer homes along the Sanha, the last pioneer home of that period, other than the Van Louven Mansion, which has been radically changed and altered. And even though it still stands where it was built, it's surrounded by an apartment complex. Starting in 2000 until COVID interrupted us in 2021, I led an annual history tour of Loma Linda for all the third graders at Bryn Mawr Elementary School. Oftentimes, Joe Frink, or his cousin Mike Murphy, or other members of the family would join us. Often, the next-door neighbors, Jim and Donna Stalker, who have pioneer roots in our valley, would join us. The story of our community came to life. For students to be able to stand on the very soil where important events happened, to see the birthplace of the citrus empire, to understand how the Sanha and the citrus and the railroad combined. Over those years, I toured 4,000 students and 2,000 adults to the Frink Adobe. Those are, many of them are still our citizens today, and they know about the history of our community because of those opportunities that we've given them through the years. I chaired the Loma Linda Historical Commission for over 18 years. From the very beginning, we were promised by city planners, by city managers, by the Planning Commission, by the various iterations of the City Council, that the city would do right by the Frink Adobe. The city knew it needed work. It needed a roof. It needed protection from flooding. There were repairs to the original Adobe walls that were needed in engineering study. The city promised, over and over again in public hearings, in the development of the HMOD, that the city would care for the heritage trees that started the whole citrus empire. They would care for the Adobe, and it would become a part of the park system of the city of Loma Linda. Those all happened in a series of approximately 20 public hearings and workshops that I chaired over several years in the development of the historic Mission Overlay District. "Just wait," said the city. "When the area is developed, the money will come." And tonight, I hear that the money has come and that there is an inclination to think that the city of Loma Linda is not obligated to care for what it has adopted. I am asking you to fulfill 20 years of promises. The money is there. The property, not just the house, is on the State Register of Historic Places. That application was supported unanimously by the Historical Commission and by the City Council in 2003. It was supported by hundreds of letters from citizens, including schoolchildren who had toured the Frink Adobe. The city of Loma Linda is the parent of this. We've adopted this by annexing the Mission District. It is a part of our city. We're obligated to do it right. It can either remain in city control, which might not be the best solution. The best solution would be to do the very best that we can to protect and preserve the building, to stabilize it, and turn it over to private hands. That's exactly what has happened in the last couple of years with the Ostestencia in Redlands. County of San Bernardino determined that it was not possible for the county museum system to continue to maintain and operate the Ostestencia and turned it over to the Redlands Community, Conservancy, I'm sorry. So it's turned out to be a good solution. I don't care who owns the property or who owns the house, as long as we fulfill our promise and the expectations of the community. I hope you've had time to read over the documents I requested you be given. I asked staff to give you the Dangeman Report, the application to the State Historic Preservation Officer, and also the exact language of the historic Mission Overlay District. I believe that if you actually pay attention to the past and the actions that have been taken, you'll do the right thing. You'll give even more support to the preservation and future of the Adobe than has been requested. When Loma Linda annexed the Mission District, it became the caregiver for the culture and the history of that most significant neighborhood. I call it the Fertile Crescent of the Inland Empire. And now is the time to step up and do what is right. Thank you very much, and I'm available for questions now or in the future.
Jim, thank you for your service as a teacher. When did you retire, sir?
2011. I've continued the tours until COVID.
Do you know of any other teachers that took students, sir, besides you?
I was the leader. There've been approximately 20 teachers involved.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Carol Dalzell. Thank you very much. Greg Girth. Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Patty Frink.
Mayor Duper, have we put time limits on anyone?
No.
So if we haven't put time limits, we can take comments. We're not putting time limits on anyone.
Did you turn in a slip? All right. Ms. Meyer, come on down.
All right, I'm feeling good without the pressure of the three minutes, so thank you, council. My name is Dr. Audrey Meyer. I have been a resident of Loma Linda since I was four and a half years old. I attended Bryn Mawr Elementary School, and I am now a member of the Loma Linda Area Parks and Historical Society. And I just received my doctorate in Public History at UCR for studying the history of Loma Linda. studying the history of Loma Linda and Bryn Mawr. So you can say I am invested in the history of my community. So, as the council agrees, the historic value of the adobe situated on its original grounds with its original groves is really undisputed, right, at this point? And as the mayor has stated, unquestionably, the adobe needs to be preserved, but it needs to be preserved in the correct manner. So, we need to make sure that we commit to making sure this adobe is preserved, that the roofing is restored, that the sides are restored, that our orange groves are restored as well. We cannot continue to let it fall into disrepair as it has been done. So today, I'm going to be speaking as a public history expert on how the adobe's preservation is a social and economic benefit to our community, as well as something that's historically significant and, according to the city, needs to be preserved. So what are the benefits of doing this? Community-oriented historical sites, like what the Two Canyons Conservancy has planned for the adobe, are crucial pieces in creating what scholar Dolores Hayden has called "the power of place." And so this is in which, as she says, quote, "public space can help nurture this more profound, subtle, and inclusive sense of what it means to be an American," end quote. In other words, places, particularly those which hold social and historical meaning, like our dear adobe, connect people and places, and they hold this social and historical meaning that connects people to history and memory. So it's this big connective piece that places play. And so she argues that sometimes city planners may not always seize upon this power of place, and in failing to leverage community spaces, we're unable to create a sense of shared history, community, and belonging for all. That is why the adobe is so important, because as the extended plan that the Two Canyons Conservancy proposes, it will be a place for school tours, a community garden, a site of learning, research, and public programming, and it will even become a more powerful place than it already is, and strengthen community ties across generations, where we can have honest conversations about our shared past and our future. Economically, it has been proven again and again through studies that specifically historic preservation has a positive economic impact for communities. The National Park Service states that, quote, "Developers are discovering that money spent rehabilitating historic buildings is actually an investment in the future," end quote. Numerous studies, such as that commissioned by the California Cultural Historical Endowment, have shown the preservation of historic sites have specific benefits, such as increased property values, revitalization for communities, and help communities see economic growth through heritage tourism. We're asking you to approve a plan which really fits into High Point's development vision, as outlined in the Grow Specific Plan, which accounts for the preservation of the adobe, and also reads, "History is on display here." So, let's have history on display in Loma Linda by rehabilitating the adobe, so it can be a functional, safe building. It cannot just be standing, as it is now, but it can be on display, as High Point says that the community this development will provide. By making sure that we are providing roofing, we are making sure the land is in the right hands, we are preserving the trees, we are allowing it to be on display for the community. And so approving this plan is the right thing to do according to policy, but it's also something that's beneficial to community due to social and economic benefits. And so, I personally, as someone who toured the adobe with my teacher, Mr. Jim Ship, and had an epiphany on that tour that I loved history, and it's what inspired me to do what I do today, we will be thrilled for future generations to be able to experience the Frank adobe as a rehabilitated space, not just as a building that exists, as a cultural resource for our community. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to receive any questions now or later.
Thank you very, very much.
You wouldn't fall off here, would you?
So, he is the city manager, the city planner, the architect, and the dog catcher. That's how many staff that we have here.
She just happened to be my daughter's third grade classmate.
Oh, there you go. He'll put you to work.
Congratulations on your doctorate, by the way.
Mr. Eichner, Eicher?
I yield my time.
Mr. Ship already came up. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I yield my time to any of the previous speakers.
All right, Mr. Stewart?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Stewart. I've been a resident of Loma Linda since 1961. My family has lived in Loma Linda, Bryn Mawr since 1880. I'm currently the chairman of the Historic Commission, and I can't say much more than Mr. Ship has already said, as he gave a huge history on what is going on, but I have a distinct memory of 1969, when the city was still part of the county service area and decided it wanted to become a city of its own and incorporate. And one of the things that was spoken to about a lot was to maintain our specific identity as a community, not to be part of just San Bernardino County and just a small area. And I think that it's incumbent upon this city to follow up on that and maintain and improve the things that we have that make us a unique city, or a unique city and maintain our heritage. The Historic Commission has followed up on the Mission Historic District for 20 years, like Jim Ship said. I was involved in all of those discussions and the meetings and the workshops. And we just discussed this whole project just recently and gave our approval, and the developer graciously donated a lot to make the spot possibly work. And I think it's important for this council to move forward and give this project the go-ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Rao.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's an honor to be here tonight. I thought I would come and just share a unique perspective in my job and duties during the day as a county supervisor. I have 12 different cities and I cover about 10,000 square miles, and I overlap many different competing interests. So in the valley, where we have the desire and the need for affordable housing, where we also know that folks that want to come and live in those houses need parklands and things that would attract them to our area. So when Two Canyons Conservancy first approached me, not necessarily about this project, but just in general what their mission was, I embraced it and I support it, and I'm here just to share a little bit of why. When those million-dollar houses sell, I can guarantee you that the drone footage that Two Canyons has of the entire canyon lands will be a selling point for those houses in there. It will be where they recreate and where they take their kids and how they grow and learn and appreciate the history. So I'm not here to say what you should or shouldn't do with that, I just know it is an important part of that which makes our county rich. We do share part of that with Riverside County, we have great partnerships there, too. I will commit financially with my discretionary money to Two Canyons, I will commit to $2,500 tonight for their mission and goal to preserve, and however, that can help them with what they do. And so whether it is or isn't to preserve that very end of it, which I would hope that you would consider in your best interest of your citizens and constituencies, I do know that the county values the historical preservation and the mission of Two Canyons, and we will do whatever we can to help them be successful. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Dr. Daly, you said you had some comments after you heard from the public? I think we're finished.
I have a letter from Christine Roke, or Rokee?
Rokee.
Rokee. Okay.
I work as a partner for educational programs.
So you're not Christine, you're a good friend of hers?
I just know how to pronounce her name.
How do you pronounce her name?
Rokee.
Rokee, okay, thank you. That helps me, that gets me off to a better start. So she's not here tonight, is that correct? She wrote a very informative letter, and I read it carefully, along with everything else that we were provided. I do have a couple of questions, and so it's probably unfair to ask you, and if you can't answer, then I'll turn to the city manager, because he's the one that provided all of this stuff. So in her letter, at one point in paragraph two, it says, "The developer, High Point Grove, is covering the costs." Even after the discussion tonight, I'm confused on that. It sounds like we've made a deal with them, and then in order to make this project work, that the $300,000, $400,000, whatever it is, comes off what they've agreed to pay for the project. Am I correct, or if not, correct me?
Yes. $370,000 will come off from the $13.8 million.
So they're not actually paying for it? Because that would be revenue for the city if...
They have to pay for, either to go toward Oakwoodland Park or the park or the...
Yeah, okay.
The community's building and the fire station.
And I probably should say, to kind of acknowledge, I see Bob Ziprick out here, he's an old friend of mine, we're both history buffs. Now, I don't claim to be very solid on my history of Loma Linda, but I have a fairly impressive library that drives my wife crazy on American history, different parts. And in my career before I retired, I had to travel a lot, and I would schedule trips and routes around places where I could visit historical sites. You know, the homes and offices of people from the Revolutionary War, Civil War battle sites, all that kind of stuff. I've done a lot of that. So I have a deep and abiding respect for history. So what I will concede is that history is important, and it is an important part of the identity of our country and the communities within our country. And so I think probably what I've, one of the things I've learned tonight is, I know Jim Ship, but I don't know him well enough to know all the history that he has, and so lesson one learned is I haven't spent enough time with Jim Ship to really understand and respect this. We have had a historical, what is it, a commissioner committee, for a long time. And I think if you look at the history predating me by, I'm sure, many years, the City Council has been a collaborator with the History Commission. Your brother, Bob Stewart, is a neighbor of mine. We've talked a lot about Loma Linda, and he's told me things that I would have never known otherwise. So I respect the historical dimension of this, I really do. Having said that, the mayor and I just came through reelection campaign, which I won't get into that, it wasn't fun. But I also have to tell you that we have an active community that is seeking answers to how effectively we're managing the tax money that they're paying to the city of Loma Linda. And I've had, you're shaking your head, ma'am, so if you disagree, then that's okay. I've had multiple questions about that. And so I don't apologize for the fact that in the last meeting two weeks ago, we asked questions about how is this going to be sustained? Because I'm going to go home and I'll face questions about, well, what about this? Well, what about that? This rate's going up, those taxes are going up. It's just part of the reality. And our role as councilmen is to be sure that we listen to and represent the will and perspective of the community. That's my job. And so I don't apologize for the questions that were posed two weeks ago. On the other hand, and I can't speak to what process has worked or has not worked, but I've learned a lot tonight that I didn't know. And you can argue that I should have, and you're probably right, but I didn't. Bob Ziprick didn't pull me aside and tell me about all this stuff. And so part of the challenge that we have on the City Council is to balance current constituents with historical priorities and values. And I'm not any smarter than anybody else in the room. You know, that's something that I've got to make a value judgment and try to listen and make the right decision in terms of my vote. So I respect everything I've heard. I respect the fact that there is a history in the city, and I've had several members of the community in the past that have shared books and other articles and so forth with me. So that's helped inform where I'm coming from. But the point of all of this is, we're trying to understand what's in the best interest of the community. And I am here to tell you, we have members of the Loma Linda community that are telling us, "It is too expensive to live in Loma Linda. Help me understand the financial and funding priorities." So I think those are fair questions. I think that's entirely fair. These are people that are working hard to live in our precious community. So that's kind of my perspective, but I want to end where I started, and that is to say that I have immense respect and value in history, period, all history. Which means, as a member of the council, I need to have respect and do a better job of understanding the history of our community. So you have helped educate me. So I have a question for, I'm not sure if it's for the city manager or the city attorney. What is the timetable we're looking at this? Because I know there is a timetable with the developer and so forth, and honestly, and I think this came from Jim probably, but I've got a whole packet here that looks very interesting. I haven't read it, because I'm just seeing it for the first time. So what are the timetable pressures that the council's facing?
Yes, so the High Point, so we're going to move forward with their projects. Out of the 70.83 acres, they're planning to build a...
Timetable, though.
Okay.
When are they starting?
July 6th. July 6th, they will bring the, both the condominium project and the 51 lot subdivision to the planning commission. And they were hoping that they will get an approval by that July 6th meeting. And then come July 12th, they will bring the project to the City Council for your review and approval, and then as soon as approved, they will start submitting a plan to me as the Public Work Director, City Engineer, to start grading and doing the plant check on the grading plan, the sewer plan, storm drain, water, and so forth, and start submitting the plan. After it was approved, after it get approved, then they will start construction. So, the adobe house right now is part of the High Point project, that at this point, they already have condition that they have to save the house and that lot that the house sit on. And what we, that's the timing, and so...
Okay. And just to be sure that I'm clear on this, High Point doesn't really have skin in this game, because they skin off the top of what they were going to pay in order to preserve the Frank House.
Yes. They had to pay $13.8 million.
That was actually my concern last time we were talking about it, because I actually believe and I trust the folks that come in here and speak in front of us. Part of my concern was altering the original agreement with the developer. Developers, I don't trust. And that's just from our history and education here, unfortunately.
We had many meetings with High Point groups that we would like to add this, the Frank House, to the listed project. So I had a meeting with them regarding this.
So if this moved forward tonight, would there be some type of contractual amendment?
Not between us and High Point, there will be an agreement or some sort of sales agreement or not, an agreement between...
We'd have to add it in the conditions. So we would have to approve it as a conditional? So we would have to approve it as a conditional?
What, what are the conditions that have to be approved?
Well, what we are going to be asking High Point to do in our conditions is to provide thirteen point eight million dollars of community benefit improvements. That's what they're gonna be obligated to do, and then to reimburse the city for four hundred thousand dollars for the development of the specific plan.
Reimburse them?
No, no. They reimburse it. So it's really a fourteen point two million dollar benefit to the city.
I didn't track that.
In the CBIs, as we call them, the community benefits, and then four hundred thousand to cover the costs of the development of the specific plan.
I see. That makes a difference.
Right.
That makes a difference.
So part of this is, you know, nailing down exactly what the CBIs are. So.
Alrighty, just to repeat some of the things that I had concern with last time. Right? I'm all for preserving the Adobe. So we're spending twenty thousand K on Arborist, eighty-seven on the structural reinforcement. No problem with that. My main problem is the two hundred and sixty K that we're spending on a parking lot. And from what I understand, it's mainly for a bus. Now, if we were gonna say that we were gonna put orange groves in that area or something along that line, like I'd be totally okay for it. But we've already seen this park, it watered down three times, I think. We had some features that we were gonna build. We didn't have enough money, so we kept on losing those features during the meetings. And my concern is that we're gonna lose more features with this oak woodland preserve. Is there anything that we can do with this lot? So if we're only using it for a bus, can we have bus parking somewhere else in the parking structures that we're building for rest of the park? If you have a field trip going to Six Flags, right, they don't have to park at the entrance. They drop people off, park somewhere else and come back. I understand the safety aspect of it, but is there some way, some way that we can incorporate the safety aspect? And not have to spend so much money on a lot just for the bus?
Okay, can I respond real fast? We, High Point already submit the plan for, for the park improvement and, and the Oakwoodland Park. So the land is already laid out for, for landscape irrigation. So again, this is me. I, I, if, if we run out of thirteen point eight, we can use the park develop in, impact fee to complete the project that was designed for the project. So, so I'm not gonna skip out on, on, no, let's not, don't do this and that, so we, we can get this done.
I, I actually, I actually had an opportunity. I wish somebody would have had it up here in the presentation. I had an opportunity to look at the design or, or the preliminary design. And it's not all park lot, parking lot. It includes some, some trees and some other I don't know what the proper term is, some shielding to, to kind of, no, it's, it's not that. It's, it's the one that you and I looked at earlier today. And so conceptually, I, I kind of understand it a little better. I kind of wish that that would have been in the presentation. Because it, it kind of does make sense on the lot that they're talking about. But my concern, I don't know if that, that doesn't answer your question. And I don't know if you can get that. If you haven't, maybe you can take a look.
Yes, I can show it to you, and, and this will come back to you on July twelve better.
Yeah, so I, I think all of us here are in agreement that, that the Adobe needs to be preserved. But I have to echo a couple of things that, that were said. I, I understand Mr. Gindal's concern about losing out in the other amenities that were promised. The bottom line is, I don't trust developers. I've seen it go south too many times. And so we had an agreement with this developer that was, we spent many community meetings hashing out, deciding what we wanted to entitle. That whole plan was entitled with the, the, the projects that we asked for. And so my concern with messing with this is that we were in some way jeopardizing that deal. Either way, the Adobe has to be preserved. Number two, like Dr. Daly said, just a month ago, we did our budget. And we had a competing committee. We had the budget committee here, and the budget committee lectured us on how there's no more money to spend. And so I'm not sure how many of you are residents of Loma Linda, but at some point, if we can't afford city services like police and fire, we have to start cutting somewhere. So that is an immense amount of pressure on the five of us to figure out how to come up with that and how to serve the citizens here. So this, we don't take any of this lightly. This is very, very important. And there's so many other things that work in the background. And, and I know the supervisor can attest to how all this works, coming from city government herself. So we are trying to work through the best way to handle this. And to be quite honest with you, what I don't appreciate is, is people muddying the water, posting things on social media like the city council is gonna tear down the Adobe, which fires people up and gets people writing letters and all kinds of things. And what I'm, I'm glad you all showed up tonight to hear some of the history in the background and how complex this issue is for us. And I'm, I'm sure we're gonna be able to come to some type of, of a resolution and make it happen. Or make something happen. Yes, sir. You absolutely may.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Joe Frank, descendant of the Frank Adobe. I'd like to address the comment that you just made about tearing it down. That comment was not made by me. That comment was made by Jarb. And it was, it is on video. Jarb said something to the effect that when they get it, they can do whatever they want with it, tear it down or whatever. It is on video, so you could, you're more than welcome to go back and watch it.
So what he was referring to is when the Conservancy gets it?
No, when High Point got it.
I, I don't think that's correct because in our, in our agreement with High Point.
Well, it wouldn't make any difference because he said it, no matter who was, who else was involved. He, he did say it. I just want to clear that that I didn't make that up, but he did say it. I put it out.
I appreciate you saying that. I don't think that was any of the understanding from the five of us here. That's not what we understood. Our understanding with that agreement was that High Point has to maintain it. That's part of the contractual agreement.
It's in the specific plan. It's a mitigated requirement. So.
Before you leave, sir, what, what, what is your point in telling this?
He's responding to my, my comment about.
No, I understand that, but, but what's the point? You're saying Jarb's being dishonest, or, or what's the point you're trying to drive here?
Everybody here on the council, including Jarb and the mayor, have said that that was basically a lie. That he said that. He did say that. Now, whether you refer to High Point, the city, TCC, it wasn't real clear, but he did say it, and you're more than welcome to, to watch your own video. I mean, you should, at least one person out of this whole group should know that he said it. I mean, I hope you're all awake.
So, so what's your point? You're concerned that the city wants to tear it down?
No, my point is that I don't like to be called something that I'm not. And I'm, I'm here to defend myself. You can't tear it down. And when Jarb and I had a discussion later in the week, I told, he says, I can't, we can't tear it down. And I said, I know because it's on the historic registry.
Well, that's not, that's not the reason. The reason is it's in the specific plan, but, but either way.
If I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions?
Out of curiosity, there are so many history majors here. Why was the land originally sold? And why are we in this situation today? Does do we know what happened?
The state, the state mandate that we have to
No, 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 he's talking about originally from the, I actually read some of your history on this, so go ahead. You think I'm No, no, no.
There, there's, there's danger in coulda, woulda, shoulda. Mistakes were made in the past. I had nothing to do with them, and neither did any of you or any of us. There was a time that the redevelopment agency was seen as an arm of the city. And when the Frank Adobe and the entire Frank Ranch, which is encompassing most of, of what this development project is, was sold from private hands, it was assumed that the private owners were selling it to the city of Loma Linda because that's how we all thought. Because the, the redevelopment agency board was exactly the same as the city council. And what should have happened, did not happen. What should have happened is that the Frank and, and maybe a, a five acre park around it should have been developed by the city, using the city budget and city parks budget, and maintained as a, as a cultural, historical site for the community. Unfortunately, the city could not do that because it did not own the property. And two thousand twelve came along and we really were severed entirely. So that even if Jarb had wanted to, he really couldn't include it in the parks budget. It couldn't be owned as a city park. It should have been. That was the will of the people back in two thousand two and two thousand three when we were holding all of these public hearings. They wanted a park. They wanted an interpretive historical park. And we were told at that time correctly, it doesn't, it's not owned by the city. It's owned by the redevelopment agency. And so we can't really do anything to it until the developer comes along and funds it. But when that happens, then it will be preserved and it will be deeded back to the city as a park, and that's what's going to happen. The state interfered in that process. What we are saying, who support a plan to preserve and protect it is that, that the city did not do what it really should have done all those years. And there's a good reason for that not happening. I understand that, and most of us do understand that the city's hands were tied. We couldn't turn it into a park ten years ago, or twenty years ago, or thirty years ago, even though that was the will of the community publicly stated in a number of workshops and, and, and hearings. So it came down to now. And the promise was the developer will pay for it. That's what's going to happen. And it will come back to the city, and it, the money is going to arrive. Now the money is arriving, and the developer is willing to do the plan. And the problem is that we hear, well, but we're not getting that money. It's going to be going to the Frank Adobe, and then, then we can't use it for other things.
Well, no, no.
It should always have been included in the CBI. It should always have been. There was a mistake somewhere in the process that the funding for the Frank Adobe was not included, although the requirements were included. Specific plan, condition of approval, mitigations, all of that was included, but exactly how the funding was going to be done languished until this moment. So now it's up to you to decide whether money that you don't have in your hands is going to go for this project, which has been delayed for, in my knowledge, at least twenty years. Should have been funded a long time ago. We should have been using this as, as part of our park system for a long time. Whether we're going to allow the developer to fund it and give them credit for that funding. If we allow them to do it as a community, then it will get done. And if we don't do it, our obligation is still there, which means it needs to come out of the city budget.
Well, and that's kind of where we're at, right? Because what we're talking about right here are minimal improvements, and then purchasing land. That does, none of this price tag right here includes any of the development.
That's correct.
And so we're assuming that Two Canyons is going to be able to do that. That, that was my my fiduciary duty in asking those questions. Because part of the other thing that we heard last two weeks ago was that if Two Canyons fails, this comes back to the city as a responsibility. Hence, the upkeep and maintenance that now we're encumbered with, and those other questions and things. So I'm sorry, any, anything else to add to that? I, I did some homework also. I, I contacted some residents that live down in the area and I can't say that I got a whole lot of positive support. In fact, I spoke to one resident with, all three of his children went to Bryn Mawr Academy, and he asked them, all three of them in front of me, if they knew, if they'd ever been to an Adobe or the Frank Adobe, and they practically live across the street from it. And none of his three children could respond to me on it. So maybe that's, that highlights the failure that we've all had here, maybe. Right? So anyway, yes, sir.
It doesn't answer the question?
No, I know where you were going. You meant originally when it was sold.
So when, when was it sold? Two thousand and three?
So No, no, so hold on a minute, though. So there's, yes. So there was a Sun article this week that was written. It was actually a pretty good, pretty decent article, but I don't know where the, the, where all the facts came from. Because in the article, it wrote that, that the Adobe was sold to the city in nineteen sixty-four. This city did not exist in nineteen sixty-four. So that is a hundred percent impossible. So the, I understand where that question is because I have the same question, and I did some research. And in fact, I went back to comments previous council members had made and, and things that were said. And I actually think this is a much more amenable council than there was twenty years ago. Because twenty years ago, there was talk about tearing it down at the council level. It, it wasn't nineteen sixty-four. We didn't exist as a city.
Where, when was it sold to whom, and why wasn't like money allocated then to preserve this?
It just, it wasn't ever a priority.
I may have
Who profited from it?
An answer to that. Bob Ziprick is an old friend and esteemed attorney in the local community and a former Loma Linda City Council member. And, you know, the bone I have to pick with Bob is that we took a lot of classes together, and as my recollection, he always beat me out in, in good scores. So Bob, I'd be interested, because I know you're a local historian and have been for a while. Can you come up and share your perspective on all of this? I'd like to hear it.
Bob Ziprick, for the record. As you know, I chaired the RDA after Charlie Ameda. And it's my recollection, I didn't do a property profile for tonight. But usually I do those to trace back any property cases. But I think this property was owned by the RDA, because I went on the council in ninety-eight. Charlie, I, I think the RDA already owned it, if I remember. And I, I know we talked, Jim's correct, because I'm a member of that society too. The Park and Historical Society. The goal was to try to get that property from the RDA. And we worked with your partner. We couldn't easily move it from the RDA to the city. You all know the legalities of that. And so the plan was pretty much like you're hearing to eventually be able to move it when something occurred. And we all have been through the battles over what should happen to that whole area. I don't think that's a secret any of the council members. So I think that that was pretty much the plan. We recognize that this was a contact point where, I'm sorry, Jedediah Smith, the first US explorer, came there first. First overland trip. And so that's why it's got a number of historical things. I talked to the county museum one time, and they said that whole area is Smithsonian level. There've been digs under there by not Loma Linda University, but some other universities in the area where lots of pots and things like that have been recovered about three feet down. So the city controls where Guashama is. So our goal was to protect as much of Old San Bernardino as we could. But the RDA was the only mechanism we had at that time, because you all know how the increment worked. The city just didn't have free money to do all of that. And thus, you and I worked on the hills, along with a lot of others. And we had lots of questions how to do that, but that was RDA also. So there's only so much that your partner, we, we tried to work through several objectives for the city all at one time. And so the hope was pretty much, as all of you have heard, that at some point when this developed, this would move into the city's ownership. And we worked with Pete Dangerman, because frankly, I was chair of historical commission before Jim, before I was on the council. So we were trying to figure out how to identify and preserve the most historic structures. I don't know if I've explained it well enough or confused it, but I think at that point, I can stop unless you have any questions.
Ken, one question.
Sure.
You've done a good job of parsing out the weeds.
Trying.
Give me a thirty thousand foot view of everything we've been talking about tonight.
This and the Van Louven.
Because you, you grew up here.
Yeah. Since sixty, January ten of sixty-four is when we moved here. But my dad had been a student in the medical school and graduated in nineteen thirty-seven. So the family did go back a ways. This is one of the oldest homes in the county. I think we figured out this was probably I think we figured out this was probably, Pete, if you're here, 1872 roughly, if you remember. Cause we were working on the survey of Mission Road because we realized we had kind of a historical issue. And after I talked to the county museum, they said, you have kind of a treasure trove here because you have Old San Bernardino because San Bernardino was founded on Mission Road and then moved about 1848, 1850. So that's why we realized we really have to be careful with this because it's actually extremely historic. So those two houses are the most, among the oldest houses in the county, not just Loma Linda. Does that help? That's 30,000 feet.
Okay.
Fuzziness maybe is that the city hired our firm at that time to do the historic study of the Mission Road area and how it would fit. And that allowed, uh, set the guidelines actually for the development that's on the south side of the road, which I think has been terrific. And, um, at any rate it was, but part of that was then to identify the, this as an important place to, and if at all possible, to connect it to the, the original area and the Native American site as well.
It, it's a, there's another little piece to this puzzle that, um, and we, who, it, had, had we not been able to, um, work on this deal basically because of the dissolving of the RDA, the state would have, would have inherited all this property, would have sold it to the lowest bidder, which means we would have ended up with, with a lot of stuff that would not have fit. And so part of the pressure to get all this done was to make sure we had, we were able to preserve as much as we could of that district. And there's a lot of stuff in the background and it's very complicated. I know you, you both are nodding, you understand maneuvering around the state, especially after they took it away. We had, we had timelines and we were able to, we were able to entitle what we thought was the most appropriate and the most preserving of the historic value. So there's a lot of stuff tied to this whole area that was almost completely out of our control. And, uh, and yeah, that's all I'll say about that. But, um, one, like one foot, no, that didn't even come up, but the Zona, you know that that's a engineering landmark. It was the first irrigation project in this part of California and it runs through there and that created water rights. I mean, if you talk to historians and legal people on water rights, that's major. We haven't been talking about that, but that's why the franks and those all located there. So, you know, you start to say you could spend the whole council meeting on it. We don't want to do that because I mean, you guys have other things you got to get to tonight. But that's why it's so complicated and that's why Pete was brought in to analyze this. I forget what year.
I think it was 2002 or roughly.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Anyway, unless you have any other comments or questions.
Just one, one last thought. It's, uh, it kind of makes me shake, but it seems to me that right tonight, you're deciding whether to go through the door and actually accomplish it or not. All these years of it being put off and this and that, and, but right now you've got the glass door to open to go through and, and make it happen. And we'll be a glad, happy partner working with you to make it happen.
In my mind, it's, we're getting halfway through the door and it's gonna, it's requiring that trust word you said.
It's one of those that you push on and you.
To get the rest of the way.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Dr. Rigsby.
Has the public, um, comment time been closed?
Yeah, I, I think we've exhausted it, except Mr. Harrison. It's, it's, it's the history of the city council is what we're actually doing here tonight.
I think it's closed right now.
Thank you. Melford Harrison, in 1988, I was chairman of the redevelopment agency of the city of Loma Linda. I was for 10 years from 1980 to 1990. Two major things that the redevelopment agency did during that period. They bought all of this property because we were afraid it was going to go into piecemeal development. We wanted to have control over what happened on that property. The second major thing we did during that time is build this facility. That was done by the redevelopment agency. So the two of those were accomplished, um, up before actually 1990. I mean, yes, before 1990. So, um, and we bought it specifically for that purpose, but as a redevelopment agency. Property, we had to, we had to develop it with specific plans, et cetera. And then of course, there was the crash and, and everything else. This man right here, you can trust. I'm pointing to Pete Dangeman. He and I started working together. Well, I, I trust you too, Ron. I, I trust Karen more, but I trust you. Pete and I started working together in 1972. He was the Riverside County Parks Director and I was the Riverside County Plant and Commissioner. And Pete went on to become the State of California Parks Director and we continued to work together off and on during the years. And, uh, he's a man who I have a great deal of respect for and total trust for. Thank you.
Dr. Rigsby.
Okay, I would like to move the staff, go, more public comment.
My name is Julie Stalker. I have probably spent more time in that Adobe than anyone in this room, maybe even more than Joey. I live next door. I grew up there. I moved in in 1968. That was my playground. All I'm asking is let's just do the right thing. Let's just jump in with both feet and let's just see where this takes us. It's gonna work out. Thank you.
Okay, I move the staff recommendation, including authorizing the city manager to implement the 13.8 million dollar community benefiting improvement program inclusive of A, managing the scope and budget of and between each component of the community benefiting improvement to maximize benefits to the city. B, seeking reimbursement of 400,000 for the costs of, uh, preparing and adopting the groves at Loma Linda specific plan. And C, adding the historic Frank House project to the list of community benefiting improvements.
First.
I think that's a reasonable proposal and I'll second.
Yeah, the second. Madam Clerk.
I don't think so.
I think it's been stated well enough.
One thing I think missing from the motion, uh, was what number it's going to be on for the list of priorities.
It was number four. His motion, his emotion was to adopt the staff report, which makes it number four. Do you have a substitute motion?
Number four between the two parts.
Can I ask three questions?
Absolutely.
First question, so 13.8 million, are you at least like 80% confident that all five, yeah, all five things will be done with the 13.8 million?
No, I, 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 I can't promise that, so.
Not promise, but you're, you're not even confident that, that would happen?
Well, that's why, that's why we have backup plan, which is the park development impact fee.
Okay. So assuming that it's going to dip into the park, uh, development impact fee, um, how much is it going to affect improvements in our other parks? So there's like three other things, right?
The High Point have to pay park development impact fee. Hold on. And, and we as a city, we should spend that part of the funding for this area because right now there's no park with addition, with, with exception on the new one that Lenard just built. Uh, we should spend that in this area. So, so again, I have to come bring it back to, to this, the council to review and approve all my projects anyway. So you have a chance to, to say yes or no to, to any projects. So.
So, um, something to add to that is I, I think there's a desire by the developer to move this project quickly because they see costs escalating, um, super, super fast. And if they don't get started soon, um, we may only get half of there and it has nothing to do with the Adobe. We may only get half of those proposed, um, improvements.
So that 370K that we would be dipping into the fee, would that not have been used for Hoda Crook's Park or any other park?
No, we can, again, we have pot of money that can only be used for park development and, and, and so we can use for any parks, but I prefer that since it's really come from the development is this area, we should use in this area. So that's, that's my, that would be my recommendation.
That's a good point.
You good with it? Okay. You good with the motion as stated or do you want to make a substitute?
It wouldn't matter if we changed the order because the park development fee is going to cover one thing or the other. As long as we're not sacrificing the Oakland Preserve, um, the order doesn't matter.
It, it couldn't be used for the fire station or the community center. It could only be used for like the park options on there, which is the woodland preserve.
And, and I got that right, right? Nothing, like the order doesn't matter at this point.
Okay, good. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Motion to authorize the city manager to implement the 13.8 million community benefiting improvements program applicable to the groves at Loma Linda specific plant inclusive of A, managing the scope and budgets of and between each component of the community benefiting improvements to maximize benefit to the city. And B, seeking reimbursement of 400,000 represent, representing a portion of the cost incurred in connection with the preparation and adoption of the groves at Loma Linda specific plant and adding the historic Frank Adobe House project to the list of community benefiting improvements. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay. We're going to move on to, uh.
Congratulations. This council's never been able to turn Jim's ship down when he didn't make a passionate plea, so.
Okay, moving on to item number one, public hearing.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
We have a public hearing on council billing.
The pizza must be here outside.
I'm being entertained.
Yeah, Milford, explain that dead garbage truck on Campus Street.
Well, garbage trucks die regularly.
It must not have had enough methane in it. Okay, item number one, our landscape maintenance district.
Yes, sir. This is a repeat at the May ten city council meeting. I brought the items to the city council and this is the second reading for you to approve the engineering report so that we can assess the landscape assessment on the property and this requires a public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Milford, Dick, no.
One.
Item number one.
Landscape assessment district.
Okay, seeing nobody running forward, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Move approval of Council Bill R dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion to adopt Council Bill number R dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six to approve the annual report and assessment for landscape maintenance district number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lennart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daly?
Aye, because I'm not sure where I'm at on this.
Trust us.
That'll, that'll make Councilman Lennart happy. If I'm confused, then, no questions.
What's that?
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number two, which is the streetlight assessment district.
Yes, sir. We present this item at the May ten city council meeting and require a second reading to approve the engineering report and authorize the city to assess the, the street, the streetlight assessment district.
Uh, we're going to open, open the public hearing. Are you sure? Dick, okay. Close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Move Council Bill R dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, I, I got a real caveat. I gotta say, because you didn't bring it up, but we always have to bring it up, that we need, these, both of these are underfunded and it's not right and we need to figure it out. And I agree with you, so. The landscape maintenance districts.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's not underfunded, it's the graph that I'm always looking at.
Okay.
Motion to adopt Council Bill R dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven to approve the annual report and assessment for streetlight benefit assessment district for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking you. Can you talk into the microphone? Oh, H two, okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lennart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Mister Mayor, on, on consent calendar, I would like at the city attorney to request pool number six and.
Well, I thought you.
Five. Is that for the agreement with the West Coast Harbors, she would like to review the, the contract. You know, go ahead and approve the.
So which are, which are you pulling out?
Four A six.
A six.
And standalone five.
Yeah, standalone five. Is that to give opportunity to the city attorney to review the contract with West Coast Harbors and the.
I'm over the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Could we, can we address this right now so we could take it all together, or do we, should we take them separately?
It needs legal review. Yes, we can. So on, on four A six, on the West Coast Harbors agreement, I'd like the council to, if they're approving it, to make the contract subject to any revisions deemed necessary by myself. There are some provisions in the contract that need to be updated, insurance and indemnification provisions. So if you're approving it, I'd like to do it subject to any revisions I deem necessary. And then on number five, I would just like to add, th- this is the contract with the demographer company and the attorney in connection with the Civil Rights Voting Act. And I'd like you to add to the recommendation that you ratify and authorize the city attorney to sign both contracts.
Okay, I amended my motion to include what she said.
Okay, and I want to pull item six. Go ahead.
You want to pull item six?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's try to knock that out first then.
Go ahead.
You want to talk about.
Oh, knock this out, okay.
Yeah. Item six.
It's the amendment with Mig? Yes.
So where, where we say, okay.
The housing element.
Yeah, I'm trying to wait for the feedback. Um, requesting, because this. This housing element update, I mean, that, that's been an issue that's come up here multiple times.
In perpetuity.
Trying to understand, and I'm still working at understanding it.
It's never finished and all we're doing is extending the contract for another year.
So requesting additional revisions before certifying the house element.
Because it probably came back.
What's your overall assessment of what the shape of this is? Because.
Did it come back from the state?
We keep, keep getting tripped up on this thing.
Okay, so we, we've been in, within an agreement with Mig for the past year and a half or so and they have, uh, they have worked out everything in terms of the housing elements, even come before this council and it is adopted. Right now, it's getting reviewed by the state's housing and community development department and they have corrections. And so most cities will have corrections. No one gets certified in the, in the first time. So we still have money within the funds because we got a grant to pay for the housing element. We ha- we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
Leftover from the LEAF grant.
Exactly, exactly. So that hundred and nine thousand dollar is just the original amount because we are not amending the original amount. What we're doing is amending, amending the date because the contract already expired with Mig. So this gives them an opportunity to continue working to make sure that our housing element gets certified. And in terms of the game plan of when they're going to finish that, she's let me know, um, we meet regularly, so in about two or three weeks, she will have addressed the corrections and then they go back to HCD for review and hopefully, hopefully for recertific, or for certification.
So that all makes sense to me. My, my frustration is this, I've been on the council for twelve years. This just keeps recycling through. Every time we submit something, they've got questions and need revisions. And we go get a consultant and we got it, you know, we got grant money.
It's creating jobs for lawyers.
Sanctification is the work of a lifetime.
What's that?
Sanctification is the work of a lifetime, and so is the housing element.
It's too theological for me.
At, at this time, I believe nine or eleven cities have been certified. Uh, I do believe we're close to it. There's hundreds that have not been certified and they're going through the same process. And once we're certified, then we'll technically get an eight-year cycle and then we'd have to do it all over again.
Okay. That's what I thought I was going to hear is, but.
I was just going to say that the bottom line is we're just extending the term.
I understand that, but it happens every time.
What, uh, what, what were the, how many elements did they, did the state or revision or whatever you call it? How many things did they ding us on?
I, I didn't understand the question, as in what were, what were the issues that they saw with our housing?
Yeah, what were the corrections?
Uh, something to do with our ADU. They thought it was a little too strict. So there are just little things that they wanted us to redefine. And zoning questions about emergency shelters. They wanted us to, again, redefine and amend our zoning for that. So those are, those are actually items that we will bring before you because we will have to do zoning amendments to appease HCD and make sure that we satisfy all of their requirements.
Yeah, I've, I've just heard stories. They've, they've kicked back everybody's application for random, it's, they're trying to find things.
That is correct. And Mig is working with several cities and she said that our, that our letter of corrections is actually one of the shortest letter corrections that she's ever seen. So that's why I truly believe it's going to be a fast process.
So, you know, the scary part of this is, you know, I come from a philosophy that there is some good the government can do and should do. But now I'm at a point where I'm siding with my challengers of Rigsby and Lennart and the mayor and saying, this is getting nuts because this happens every time. And, and, you know, and we just keep drawing down on the grant we have.
That, that is correct. However, she's not going over budget. She doesn't plan to. And one thing too that we've noticed is that we need to educate these housing experts because they don't really understand how our city works and how zoning and development code works. So a lot of it is trying to tell them about our measure V, trying to tell them about our process when it comes to permitting and use permits, that it's not restricting, it is just part of the, the approval and review process.
I'm just trying to challenge the state government on this. I, I'm kind of looking for a little positive feedback.
At the end of the day, they want, they want to eliminate all zoning. So if they get their way, none of this matters.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, the whole state will be like Houston. McDonald's next to a daycare center next to your house. Too bad.
I could, I could walk next door for my Big Mac. All right. Do you want to take the whole calendar now with those amendments? You still good with that?
There are no amendments.
Yes.
Other than, other than ones that were stated in the original motion. What is it?
Sewer leak.
Presidential inbound nuclear warheads.
It's not my wife looking for me, is it?
Item three, ratify and authorize the city attorney to sign both contracts. Number three, right?
Number five.
Okay. And number four, subject to, subject to ma- uh, make provisions as necessary.
That was four A six. Now mine's going off. It's never done this before in my life.
Your wife's looking for you.
It says Councilman Daly's on the loose.
So I actually heard a presentation by somebody from FEMA back in two thousand, I don't know, ten or eleven, talking about the mobile address system for cell phones. And was it two thousand twelve? Every phone sold in this country had to be compliant with this by two thousand twelve, I think. And there's three levels of alerts. You can, so the lowest level is like your Amber Alerts and all that, which you can turn off in your phone. Then the second level is like, you know, inbound hurricane. And the third level you cannot turn off, has to be constantly active. And that is the presidential level where the president can send out an emergency alert, you know, right? And it's fascinating to me because it means there's, you cannot turn off the, the geolocation on your phone technically. Always. Okay, um, I think we're clear on it.
Motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar as amended. Uh, Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lennart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Uh, items on the consent calendar are approved as amended.
Thank you very much. Normally, we would move on to old business number eleven, uh, which is our refuse and disposal, but I think I want to make Milford wait, so. No, I'm kidding. We'll, we'll go ahead and do number eleven.
Eleven?
Yes, eleven.
We're on five. You're going to screw my whole organization up here.
Twelve?
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Oh, item, okay. My mistake.
Do we need a do-over?
We have a do-over and I, and I think this will be simple. The do-over is on item five and I didn't see it was under consent calendar. I, I read a couple of times this handout you gave to us. I think the proposal from NDC is very good. They've got an impressive record and they explained everything explicitly, but, um, I won't go through anything in detail, but I do have questions. They say we will fit the agreement for the goals of, of the city. We don't have any goals that I know of. I mean, except we know we need some districts developed and.
You guys can meet separately about it.
I, I understand that, but we pay for every one of them too. And so where, where does the sixty thousand dollars come from?
It's a combination of thirty thousand dollars for the attorney and about thirty thousand dollars for this.
And I saw that. But there are permitting, meeting fees and, and. Okay. But it, but if we exceed it, then we get charged more. No, that, that's the basic, but that doesn't include any meetings. Yeah, no, I saw that. Okay, I'm also concerned on page twenty-four of this handout you gave us. Uh, conclusion, they start with number five. I'm curious what numbers one, two, three, and four are. They're cut and paste. I agree. So I want them to paste.
For sixty thousand dollars, he wants them to have proper grammar.
Okay, the other thing that we need to decide on, and we don't have to decide on it tonight, is that they say that they will work with community commissions or groups. But every time you do something like that, you're paying more money. Yeah, no, I understand, but there's an interactive dimension of this that you don't have to pay for, extra for. But if you have a districting commission, then you do because you have to pay for the extra meetings.
The council will be the final say.
I, I understand. But you pay for every one of those too. So if you have meetings with the council, you pay extra for those, Zoom or otherwise. If you pay meetings with an independent commission, then you pay for those. And so they say in here pretty directly that it'll increase your cost. Yeah, I, I understand that, but, um, what surprised me in this is that we didn't have a pre-session to discuss some of the details on this because before we meet with them, we need to kind of have our act together in terms of what are our goals in this? What are we trying to achieve? That's, that's what they talk about in here. I understand that. I understand that. I'm just saying, we're predicting how much it'll cost without even understanding what our goals and the process will look like. That's all I'm saying. And if we have to revise it, we can revise it and that's okay. But, but, what's that?
Yeah, okay. Sure, sure. Some of this was timeline stuff, right?
Yeah, we have to do, and, and that was another question, and I'm not going through it now because I had every, I had all my notes in here, but, um, there's a question on, on the timeline. And, and my recollection is two weeks ago, we understood we had to have something in process by this meeting. What is it we had to have in process to hire these guys or?
No, we determined that we could wait until the meeting of July twelfth. We have until about the fourteenth to adopt a resolution of intention.
And the intention would be to contract with?
No, the intention would be to move towards district elections.
Yeah.
So there's a time period. So we need, um, we certainly need the attorney on board to help. So there's a time period. So we need, um, we certainly need the attorney on board to help us with the resolution of intention. And then we want to get the demographer on board, so he can start looking into the mapping. And there's certain public hearings we have to have, so it's kind of a tight timeline. Before, we thought we'd have to adopt the resolution tonight.
But if, if I'm recalling correctly, because we're in a hurry, so I don't have time to go through my notes, but. About thirty thousand of that is for attorney's fees, and about thirty thousand is for the contractor.
That's the estimate.
And that's an estimate.
This is the thirty thousand dollar fee we have to pay the one that's suing us.
Well, that's in addition to.
That's the attorney. That's part of the attorney.
No, that's in addition to this.
In addition to this.
The, what's on?
Well, that's not reflected in this.
Well, right, we haven't gotten, and, and actually.
Because, because we may, we have to, may have to pay more if we don't resolve it. That's the problem.
Well, gentlemen, we're, we're getting a little beyond the scope of what's been agendized. The only thing that's been agendized tonight are, are the, the two agreements. One with the attorney to assist us with the process, and one with the demographer to assist us with developing the maps.
So we're kind of going and, and estimating what both are gonna cost us.
Right, we have no, the, the attorney may not cost us anywhere near thirty thousand. I don't know.
It's a wet finger in the wind.
It's based on an hourly rate.
That's the basis. It's a guess.
Yeah, well, okay. I'm a statistician, so guessing isn't part of my vocabulary, but anyway, okay.
Well, when you make, when you make a budget that has round numbers like thirty thousand, it's clearly a guess.
Okay. All right. They, they look very qualified, and I look forward to working with them. They've got a lot of options in there. But I, I am concerned about whether our budget estimates are gonna be within a reasonable range. Because they charge you for everything.
This, uh, I've, I've worked with, uh, this firm for a long time, and they're, they're, the law firm. And they're, um, probably one of the most well-respected firms in the municipal.
You're talking about the district consultants?
No, well, I'm talking about the Collintuno High Smith, High Smith and Lotley Law Firm.
Attorneys, yeah, okay.
So they recommended this demographer, but this demographer is the one that's been used by almost everyone.
No.
Jarb's been at a presentation, he did a league presentation at the City Attorneys League. He can rattle off the cities and.
No, the credentialing is impeccable. It really is. Um, I need to go back and redo my curriculum vitae, so it, it matches there, no, but it's very good. So I have no question about their, their caliber. But I do have questions about how much this is gonna cost us, and, and I have questions about what are our, our goals? We need to meet the state requirements, clearly. But they, they talk in here about, you can go beyond that in multiple ways. And, and we haven't even talked about it, so that bothers me.
That, well, that's coming up. We need to provide them with direction. There are issues like four districts and a, a mayor at large. Five districts, so those are things that the council is going to have to look at and, and give some consideration to. But that's not what's on the agenda for this evening.
So on the agenda is to approve the law firm and the consultants. And we'll sort the details out later.
Right, because we need their assistance, but they need to know they're going to get paid. So we need to approve their contracts first.
Okay.
And we already did.
And, and, and that's the thing, you, you did authorize me to enter into those contracts. I'm just wanting you to ratify it in, tonight, in open session.
Which we already did, because we passed the entire consent.
Yeah, yeah, all right. I'm sorry, I'm a little anal about reading stuff that's given to me, so. Okay. Item number eleven.
Yes, it is, uh, this is as, uh, a second reading to approve the amendment to the Municipal Code, Chapter eight point one two. To add the, uh, the SB thirteen eighty-three to the code. So, we already went through all that at last meeting, so this is just to, to add to, to the municipal code. This is a public hearing, so.
It doesn't say that.
It, it did.
Did we do the public hearing last time?
Oh, wait, wait, we did last time.
It was last time.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, then I, then I move, I move the Council Bill O dash twenty twenty-two oh two, second reading, roll call, vote.
First and a second.
And by, do it, is this one we have to do by name only? The language. Yeah.
Motions to waive the reading of Council Bill in its entirety and adopt City Council Bill O dash two zero two two dash zero two. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, to update and amend Loma Linda Municipal Code, Chapter eight point one two. Refuge, Refuge Collection Recycling and Disposal to Implement SB thirteen eighty-three. The Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Act of twenty sixteen related to the single-family, multifamily, and commercial organics collection and edible food waste collection programs.
Who, who's second? I didn't hear who's second.
Uh, Leonard. Councilman Jendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rigsby?
We're not doing the lights?
We can't do them.
Yes.
Thank you.
No, we can't do them, trust me.
Mayor Protam.
They're not working.
Daly? Mayor Duper?
Yes, I, I know you do. They're just not working tonight.
I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, Milford, we didn't give you an opportunity to present, unless you would like to do that now?
I think not.
Okay, you're, you're welcome. Moving on to number thirteen, appointments. Sure. Uh, number thirteen?
Do we have to do anything other than just saying that's a good idea?
I think we all are in agreement. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirteen. Let's, uh, send Bavin to, off to camp.
Okay, number fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Duper, Councilmen, members of the public of what we have left. My name is Lorena Materita, and tonight I am not presenting a development proposal. Tonight is going to be a unique presentation, a unique request. One that I believe will be a fun and great opportunity for council and the Loma Linda community. So what I'm gonna ask of you tonight is to add a third sister city or a friendship city relationship. Basically, I'm asking that you approve a resolution to authorize an MOU of a friendship city relationship between the City of Loma Linda and the Municipality of Punta Arenas in Costa Rica. I'd be remiss if I didn't share that my cultural background is Costa Rican. And just this past spring, I went to go visit my father and my family over there. And the mayor, um, he came to look at a grading project nearby where my father lived. So of course, I had to go see what he was doing, who was this guy, I had to ask questions. And I basically demanded that he give me a tour of City Hall the next day. So the next day, I went to City Hall, and I sat in one of their staff meetings, even spoke about Loma Linda. Come to find out, um, they're, they were working on a hospital project and a bunch of other things, which I'm gonna get to in, in the presentation. But I just wanted to know, know, let you know that I do have a tie to the country. But I barely met the mayor a few months ago. We're not related in any way. But through this meeting, he, he expressed interest in forming this relationship. So I told him that I will go back and I will present to my council and see what they say, so that is what I'm doing today. So for those of you that don't know what a sister city or a friendship city relationship is, I have it here. I, I will read the definitions out for you. So a sister city relationship is a formal, long-term partnership between two communities in two countries. Each sister city organization is independent and pursues the activities that are important to them and their community. A friendship city relationship is less formal than a sister city relationship and can be as active or passive as the participating cities wish. I do wanna note that both, both definitions are broad and subjective, and many jurisdictions use these terms interchangeably. Whether you wanna call it sister, brother, friendship, it's really all dependent on you and how you wanna adopt your resolution tonight. But I think I'm recommending we call it a friendship city. So what is the purpose of such relationship? It is to create an atmosphere of goodwill and initiate information exchanges between communities for mutual benefit. It is intended to foster increased global cooperation, diplomacy, and communication at the municipal level for the benefit of participating cities. I do wanna know, and it's clearly noted in your staff report as well, um, for Loma Linda, there is no financial impact to the city. No cost will be incurred in support of these relationships, with exception of minor staff time for administration and other small gifts for dignitaries, such as city pins, pencils, like items. So if you were thinking that you were gonna go on vacation this holiday to Costa Rica, we will not be funding it, because it's not part of the budget. I do wanna note too that other cities do have, have it part of the budget, but, um, it will, it's unlikely that it will ever become part of Loma Linda's budget.
Well, if we reopen the budget.
We can consider it the next fiscal year. So today, Loma Linda has two sister cities. One in Manapal, India, and the other in Libertador, Argentina. Uh, the one in India became an official sister city in nineteen eighty-two, and two years later, we became shankstened under the auspices of Sister Cities International. Uh, in terms of the one in Ar- Argentina, we approved an agreement of fraternity with them, um, twenty years ago this year. Both cities have remained dormant in terms of relationship with them, but they still, um, remain in place. We never adopted a resolution to get rid of them, so they still remain in place. And so again, I'm asking tonight for a third one. In terms of our neighboring cities, I just wanna let you know, Redlands has three sister cities. San Bernardino has eleven. And from what I know and from what I read in a Sun article from eleven years ago, eleven years ago or twelve years ago, it is my understanding that the university actually trains medical professionals from both sister cities to date. I believe, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, I did read that in the newspaper. I also wanna note that, um, the way that the relations work, sometimes when there's not a budget in place, um, I'm just gonna give you an example. So River, Riverside was able to fundraise five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. They raised that much fund for a country in Japan, I forgot the name of it. Um, the one that was affected by the tsunami in two thousand, two thousand eleven. Granted, it wasn't in their budget, but because that was their sister city, they got the community together to raise over a half a million dollars. So those are just the beautiful things about having this type of relationship. Okay, so who and what is Punta Arenas? So the Municipality of Punta Arenas is located within the province of Punta Arenas in the country, the Republic of Costa Rica. It's also, in, in the bottom left-hand corner, that is the peninsula of the, I'm gonna just call it City of Punta Arenas, but they call it Municipality of Punta Arenas. Um, that is a, a photo of the peninsula, and it's located within the Gulf of Nikoya Peninsula, so it's two peninsulas. Uh, the left or the right-hand corner is their City Hall, that is a community meeting, similar to what we do here. We're not that very different. So where is, where is Costa Rica? If you don't know, it is in Central America. It's between, between the countries of Nicaragua and Panama. The country is an eighth of the size of California, and the population overall as a country is about five million people. So where's Punta Arenas? So if we zoom in and on the left-hand corner of the screen, that is the city, Municipality of Punta Arenas. It's in red. Again, it's part of a province that has the same name. And the city comprises of fifteen districts, including about a hundred and fifteen thousand residents. They are Spanish-speaking, and their city functions almost the same as Loma Linda, where they manage and provide public resources and services to the residents. And part of the fifteen districts, like we have, we're going to have five districts, part of the fifteen districts that they have also includes six different islands. So why Punta Arenas? Not just because I met the mayor and I love going to Costa Rica. But first and foremost, um, the mayor did express initial interest to support this type of affiliation. There's an attribute match. We have very similar, many similarities as it relates to mutual interests and cultural matters, economic and sustainable development, humanitarian assistance, and health and well-being goals, resource availa- availability. There's actually volunteer support within the community development to help assist this. Um, I do wanna also note that, um, I didn't spend any staff time creating this presentation or, or the staff report. I spent my weekends doing this, because I know this is just a volunteer project on my part, so I just wanted to note that too. Um, so yes, I, I, I would assist you if you wanted to create this sort of pen-pow relationship with the mayor or their, um, council members. And you're having issues of communications, I will make myself available to do that. There's an ethical match. Both participating cities strive and have a history of being stable and ethical local government. If you don't know about Costa Rica, Costa Rica is one of the very few countries in the world that does not have a military. So they're not gonna be getting ready to go to war anytime soon, and, um, they're very, they're known for their peace and prosperity as well. And my favorite part of why Punta Arenas is the connection match. As I quickly mentioned during my intro at, of my presentation, both of cities, we both work with anchor medical institutions. We know the history of Loma Linda University and, and, and their hospital, right? Um, it was built in the nineteen sixties for earthquake safety issues. We had to build a, a whole new sixteen-story hospital. Well, Costa Rica also had a hospital built in the nineteen sixties. And in two thousand twelve, uh, most of it was damaged in a seven-point-six magnitude earthquake. So they're dealing with very similar construction issues. And when Loma Linda Hospital had our ribbon cutting in August twenty twenty-one, they had their approval for this new hospital in August twenty twenty-one. And I found all of this out when I went there to the City Hall, and I attended their staff meeting, because we were actually getting ready to do, I think it was brown, groundbreaking activities to start working on their new hospital in their city. But my favorite one is actually the Blue Zone connection. So I'm sure most of you guys all know there are five official Blue Zones in the world, correct? We are one of them, Loma Linda, and Costa Rica happens to have one of them. And the Blue Zone in Costa Rica is in, found within the Gulf Nikoya Peninsula. If you remember on the map diagram that I showed you, Punta Arenas, the city, is within the Gulf Nikoya Peninsula. So it's shared by two provinces, but Punta Arenas is also one of them. So yes, Costa Rica has a Blue Zone, Loma Linda has a Blue Zone. Um, and both communities value active living that contributes to longevity, healthy eating that leads to a longer and healthier life, and relationships with family and friends that help lengthen lifespans. So these are just some photos. Um, the top right-hand corner is of their City Hall, that was actually during my trip. So they're just as busy as we are. Uh, the, the other photos on the top left-hand corner is actually a picture of the mayor. So I didn't take that picture. That was actually a picture taken by, by him. I sent my father over there with my Loma, Loma Linda coffee mug. So he's actually sending a Loma, he's actually taking a photo with a Loma Linda coffee mug and says he drinks out of it daily.
The Loma Linda postum mug? Uh, I'll see, only a few people get that here. Go ahead.
So then the, the other photos are just, um, again, I told you, I, I met him, because he was there at a grading, grading site, and I wanted to know what he's doing to help fix my father's street, what, what he's doing with my father's taxes, just like any other, um, resident wants to know what they're doing with our money. And the other photo is in Punta Arenas too. It's just a transportation, multimodal type of project. They too, um, are trying to make it, make their streets more bike and pedestrian-friendly, and not just focus on the automobile.
Is that their version of their city manager on the backhoe?
Uh, yes, we'll just say yes. Okay, so tonight, again, I am coming before you, not just because it's, it's a strong interest to me, but also I think this would be a great and fun opportunity to you guys. I know we're kind of dormant with the other two sister cities, but I truly believe this third sister city, we could have an, we could actively participate with them. And by say, by we, I'm talking about you guys. You guys can use this as an opportunity to create an open line of communications, to talk about important issues on the, whatever government-related topics that you wanna talk to with their mayor and city councils. So I'm asking you tonight to approve Council Bill to adopt the resolution to authorize the MOU of friendship city between Loma Linda and Punta Arenas. And hopefully, if this gets adopted tonight, we can come back at a, at a different City Council meeting and, um, do a proclamation, provide a proclamation to hand and give to the Municipality of Punta Arenas. But a part of my, my request tonight too, I did notice there was two errors in the documents. So I wanted to ask as part, if you do decide to approve it tonight, that we fix the date on the resolution from eighteen to twenty-eight. And also replace the word city with municipality where applicable on the resolution and MOU. And I just say that because within his letter of interest on the letterhead, it says municipality and not city, so I just want it to be official. That concludes my presentation and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bavin.
So in regards to the other two cities that we have a relationship in name only, how do we format a relationship again that's more active?
Un- unfortunately, um, the, if you're talking about India, it's been forty years and the other one, it's been twenty years. And I did do hours of research trying to find out as much information of them. I talked to Sister City International on the phone and, you know, uh, and they didn't have... It's up to us. Who we would contact, I do not know. But I, I think it'd be very difficult not, not knowing the language or who.
We didn't even get the name of them, one of them right. It's Libertador. It's not Liberator.
Yes, uh, yes, you're correct. On, uh, and I did notice that after the fact we printed. And so I did correct it on the sta- on the PowerPoint though.
Okay, Libertador.
I think we should, uh, send a emissary, Dr. Rigsby and, uh, Mr. Jindal to, uh...
Well, these, these other two were because, because they have, uh, basically medical schools there.
And that's where I, I was kinda getting at that, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. But it did say something about, um, some professional relationship.
Medical school in Libertador San Martin. And, um, and I'm not exactly sure if that's the same case with Manapal.
Well, again, we have our historian, our original godfather council member present.
Don't remember.
I, I was on the council when we adopted Manapal. But I can't tell you much about, about. That was a long time ago.
Yeah, and there's some knickknacks in the mayor's, uh, office.
So I'll amend my proposal and say we say an emissary of Dr. Rigsby, Dr. Lenar and Mr. Jindal.
I think since you have the knickknacks.
We're, we're still recovering, so...
Actually, I would, I would like to move the, um, move the staff recommendation. Council Bill R dash two thousand twenty-two twenty-nine.
So just one more thing. Let's either, like, get these relationships going again. If not, like, let's remove them. If we're not gonna do anything with it. Doesn't have to be tonight, but just a general comment.
Okay, is that a second?
Yeah, yeah, second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, I, I have, um, one question and a couple of comments. Cause I have some experience with this kinda stuff. Is there any kind of formal agreement, quid pro quo type of stuff if we do this?
Um, yes, I actually did draft it already.
Don't say that, cause you're wrong.
Councilman Daley, I actually did go out of my way and draft one. I looked at many different samples and it's included with your resolution today should you want to adopt it. So it, is it an agreement? It is an agreement for a friendship city, yes.
Okay, so I need to review that. I didn't do that adequately before I got here, obviously.
I think it's only about a, a page or two. It, um, right?
It's okay. I'll read it. The, the, the comments are, I'm, I'm gonna vote in support of this. But I, I need to make a couple of comments because, um, I've done five different trips to China to do presentations and some research collaboration. I can't say everyone, but almost every city I was in or university I was in wanted a collaborative, formal relationship with either the university or the city. Second con- and, and so I mean, you know, it's like the leaves of autumn. The, the second comment is Manapal. I'd never heard of Manapal, India, um, until, um, I was academic dean at, at the time and the dean told me, okay, you know, we've got a formal relationship with Manapal, India, so, um, they, we, we want to have a faculty exchange program, which honestly was one-way. It was not two-way. Medical school had some faculty they sent over, but it never worked out for dentistry. And we had to provide housing or lodging and meals and basically provide a subsidy to make that all work and give him a temporary faculty appointment. Uh, that, that happened because the person who was dean at the time said, "The president told me we need to do this of the university." So we did it. It came out of our budget, totally, everything. So that's why I'm saying, I wanna be sure, I, I have no problem with this. I'm gonna vote to support it. But I wanna be sure that their expectations and our expectations are aligned. That's all I'm asking for. Because we've spent a whole bunch of money to support people coming to our camp and we've not recovered any of that. And it's not all about money, obviously, but...
Yes, most definitely. I, most definitely. I, I really appreciate those comments and I did take a lot of that into consideration as I was drafting the resolution and the agreement. And Jarb told me right away, there's no money in the budget. So, um, it, it was clear as I drafted all of that. And that is also why I chose not to call it a sister city relationship and I chose friendship city relationship. Like I said, um, by definition, it's meant to be a little bit more informal. Um, as much as you wanna participate, usually unless there's a budget, no money is involved. But I, I do agree with you. It should be important to make that clear on their end. So when they fly over there on their own money, they're not expecting to be housed at a hotel or something like that. So I, I understand what you're...
Mutual understanding, that's all I'm looking for. I don't need a city stamp or anything like that. Just mutual understanding. And I, I think it'll help clarify. And I think these kinds of international relationships are terrific. You know, they, they help, uh, relationships across the world at a time when we desperately need it. So I, I'm supportive. I just, I wanna be sure they're not thinking here and we're thinking here or the other way around. That's, that's it. But good job. Good job.
There was a second?
Motions to adopt Council Bill R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, adopting the resolution to authorize the memorandum of understanding of a friendship city relationship between the City of Loma Linda and the Municipality of Punta Arenas, Punta Arenas Province, Republic of Costa Rica. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenar?
Yeah.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, hand reports of council members. Reports of officers. Uh, that will conclude our council business. Let's move on to the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Um, nobody wishing to speak, looks like. Uh, we only have the consent calendar.
Move it.
First. And a second, Madam Clerk? It was, uh, Dr. Rigsby.
I'm always the first and the second.
He tries to get right in there.
Motions to approve the demands register items on the consent calendar as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenar?
Yeah.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. That concludes the successor, successor agency. We'll move into the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Uh, no one wishing to speak. Consent calendar.
Move it. I'm gonna let someone else do it.
Oh, that was sly. Okay. Dr. Lenar and Dr. Daley. Madam Clerk?
Motions to approve the demands register on the consent calendar for the housing authority?
Yes.
As presented, Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenar?
Yeah.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The chair member reports, reports of officers, seeing none, we're gonna close that and we're done for the evening. Thank you very much.